If you can do that without distracting your other duties. And I want to make sure with my having misplaced my emotional self-awareness in responding to this particular topic, there's a lot of people that have put a lot of time in, and that's greatly appreciated. My reaction is to this specific request that's an overreach, that doesn't take away from all the time you've put into it, and the rest of the community that has been productive. If this is the compromise to get to that level of information, I think it's actually a much more productive use of Mike as the committee chair time and Aries as the builder in question, if you're able to convey those things to them. So I'm supportive of that. Good to that?
Yeah, I mean, a big part of it is the time they need to talk to our people. And I mean, I know Russ, Russ did restoration, you know. It's been a heck of a ride, you know, the last few months, and everyone's putting in extra effort. So everyone's also maybe a little drained, you know, with the on attacks, you know, Paxton doesn't necessarily having to deal with another member either. So, you know, that's part of it as well, I think.
Thanks for offering that. It seems like a good thing. Do you have a further comment when I get an update on extracurricular activities?
Sure, and so this, I think it really goes into COVID a little bit. We've been, we've made commitments to invest in athletics. Sean talked earlier today about we include the outing club, which is actually a chess club. We obviously know that by extending that, we're taking some risks. We've had a couple of events here that Sean and Tom are working on to try to clean up a little bit. I think people are really excited to get out and get to a live game and to get around other people. I can absolutely appreciate that, having gone to one of my daughter games. But we're also seeing that there's potentially some issues that we need to make sure. We're portraying a very clear message to our community and the communities that are coming to play, also we're going to. And Sean, you said it right off the bat, and that has always been our goal, is to keep kids in this school, getting educated face-to-face with teachers as long as possible. And I think we just need to continue to remind folks of that in our communities, that that's our priority. Coming to a soccer game is nice, but if that potentially is going to impact us being in school, we need to think twice about that. And I think just, we need to continue to look at those things. We have some good things in place, having things in place and having people follow them are two different things. But we also have winter sports coming up, and we're going to have to think about what that looks like. I know Dr. Houston would love to go out with Kimmy and do some apple picking, and I keep saying, no, that's a field trip. Well, why is that different than extracurricular? In the real logical world, it isn't, and he knows that, and we've had that conversation. But we've made the commitment to be in extracurriculars. We have made a commitment to bring our kids to apple orchards or to museums or to forts and things like that. And maybe we will as time goes by. But I think for the extracurricular, and this will be part of our COVID case as well, what we learned is that we have a lot of good protocols in place that really assisted with the one part of the case that we had. The one place where, because of we made that commitment, that helped with the exposure was athletics. And that's going to be true whether it's in B-club, whether it's in bike club, whether it's in volleyball, whether it's soccer. The parameters of those activities are different. They're different because our classrooms are set up six feet apart. When you're in our schools, you know the rules about the mask and the hand washing and the cleaning. Extracurriculars, they're different. And I just wanted to make sure as a board that we are acknowledging that we're taking on those extra responsibilities, knowingly that that potentially can impact our first and primary goal of keeping our kids educated. And I think being halfway sort of in the season, I wanted to just bring that back and just check in with the board and just reiterate again where we are. I'm not asking for a change, but I think it's important to get an update from where we started to where we are right now. And it's not a fault, but it's not a mistake. We see things that we're going to continue to do, these things we're going to have to continue to have, be a little more heightened on. Not only for ourselves, but more importantly, our spectators and the people that are really out.
Last on the board?
I've gone to many soccer games for middle school, high school. I think it's been very well, we have our box, we're in masks, sit down, contacting people. My kids are extremely happy and all their friends are, so it seems to be all well.
I just stopped by, I'm waiting groceries for the girl's game. All of a sudden, the families are in their box, some with masks, some without. And once you're in your box, you get it off. I'm not sure if some of the spectators, the young, there was a clump of young males. Some spectators were talking and laughing behind, and I heard Mr. Moynihan and Mr. Frederick say, okay, I'll take this one, make sure that the other fan will come to take care of it. And I went to get groceries, it was kind of neat to see, you know, I was probably the biggest voice of concern about the sports. And it looked to me, the times I've seen it, including pulling this meeting tonight, that people seem to be adhering to that, but there is the risk. What happened, we can talk about, let's go right into COVID case update, because we're sort of talking about COVID anyway. We can do the enrollment after, it's slightly different since the agenda. But I think I also heard a lot of, you know, feedback, not just the cheers you can hear from my house, but, you know, the feedback that kids are getting some normalcy, families are getting some normalcy, pulling them back from some of the being cut off and isolation, whether it's extracurricular sports or not. So it's a fragile dance we're doing, just like every other district. But from what I've seen, it looks like it's being handled well. There was definitely a lot learned on the first COVID case and a lot more to be able to handle next one.
When are we expecting some guidance from the state on winter sports? Is the Athletic Association going to be weighing in on that as well?
So my understanding, Scott, I think it's a good question, it's a fair question. The guidance has been out from the NHRA, which falls into sports, which is given from the state, that all sports are a green light and go. There are obviously concerns with fans, as in volleyball this year, we haven't let fans into our gymnasium. Most other schools are doing the same. We'll have to see, I know Sean's on the basketball committee, he has a meeting next week, and we'll have to see what basketball looks like. Not from playing basketball on a schedule, but from what is our illness rate, how many kids do we have quarantined? What are the school districts look like, and how many games can we potentially even get in, in the winter season when there's cold and flu and all the rest of it? So we've canceled a number of athletic events. Some by choice, some of this happened to fall, but we potentially made 12 soccer games because we knew we might cancel six. You know, we ended up playing six. So I can probably see something very similar in basketball, if that's a decision in place, where we're playing some indoor sports, potentially without fans, but, you know, at any moment have that ability to pivot off of those sports and cancel those games. But the standardize that was in place from the state that was in place at the beginning of the fall season.
I suppose the ski mountains may have some say to it.
Those ski mountains have very specific rules. How that will impact us, I don't think we've gotten specific guidance from the mountains itself, but the mountains themselves have very specific rules about cheerless and lines and all the rest, singles and all the rest of it. I don't think that's been communicated to us. It'll be interesting to see where we are allowed to fit in, if we're allowed to fit in, given their inability to have so many people really want to give up some spots to allow now schools to come in and take those spots. Because they're not obviously making the money they would be making if they had people skiing there on a day pass, if we're going in there sort of skiing free, if you will, as an athletic event. Who's giving up that mountain for a tournament if they're close?
Getting the kids there, you know, pick up a ski, watch the big clown car, and just going out of the pre-COVID basketball, do you have any insights?
Yeah, a couple of things, you know, all helpful information. You know, first of all, appreciate the, you know, the support. I think Ed put it well, a number of people, it's so important to the kids. And, you know, one thing we noticed is soccer, I think that Tom did a lot of work. And it was funny, Mr. Holden came in today, and we already knew we'd put three signs up. You know, so there were more directives so that Mr. Frederick and I don't, six times in a soccer game, have to give a reminder. And so I thought, I thought that was good. I also thought what was important is, it's easy to say, no, I'm gonna, I'll be okay, I'll be good. Well, it happened now, and everybody, I think, would still be good with it, and we're seeing that. So it's not like kids have gone through it and said, well, I'm not gonna play anymore because I could, you know, I could potentially miss school, or it would be, you know, it would be a hardship. So I think we've now seen, we've been through it, and kids are doing it. To Scott's question, we go to basketball committee this week. My guess is what they will probably end up doing is similar to the fall. They'll probably allow sports, but what they do do is potentially change the season. So I think one of the things they're looking at is what states are doing on, do they play it later? Do they start games in January, for instance, instead of typically December or something like that? My suspicion is that what they will probably do is say, we're not in a position to say no to sports, but they do set the parameters of what this length of the season would be. So that's where I see that potentially happening.
Do you see any, like, home rooms, spectators, that have their boxes?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think a lot, I think we would like to. I mean, I know I would like to, you know, but I also understand that there's risks to that. And so I think we're consistently looking at those two things. I think, I think a lot of it, because we often say, we'll say, what does the rest of the fall look like? You know, I was the genius who went to Mr. Holden the day before we got our case going, hey, can we get parents in the gym? And then the next day, we had an outbreak. So Mr. Holden looked a lot smarter than I did that day, but I was about to go on that. So I think, you know, what we're looking potentially is, you know, do we go too much without, or do we go a month and a half? Or I think a lot of it, as Mr. Holden says, you know, I think it's a fair piece for Mr. Holden, as you have Mr. Moynihan, you say that they're going to socially distance in the gym. Well, I went to the soccer game, and it was pretty good, but it wasn't necessarily really good. So I think those are things, not to speak for, you know, I should look back and bring something forward to Mr. Holden, hopefully. And hopefully we have enough protocols in place, and hopefully we have enough evidence of doing things the correct way, and those things might be possible.
So, can I go back to COVID?
Please.
So I'd like to just lay out a couple pieces, one, the specifics, not the specifics of the case, but what we've learned from the case. And then I want to bring that forward to a more global conversation, ask the administration, and the SDA, to really look at this school year to this point in time, and how COVID is sort of impacting our schools. You've heard some great things about testing, but I still think there's a, we have, you know, 120 people that work in this district. And they all have lives that they're going to. We hold ourselves, we have very high expectations, our teachers have high expectations. So I'd like folks to hear about that as well. But first, let's start with the case itself. One of the things that we realized with this case, in breaking at night, the communication is going to be difficult with the Department of Health and Human Services. And that's not a knock on them, I can only imagine, in a small state like New Hampshire, minus N, they have 160 contact trace people that they've hired to do this contact tracing. You could just tell that they're overwhelmed. And I can only imagine having tried to do it here for 400 students, trying to do it for the entire state, it's got to be overwhelming. And so with that, we've learned some valuable lessons on how we can better help the Department of Health and Human Services. For parents and stuff, you saw the emails, several emails that are notifying you of the case, but I think the most important one that went out at the end of last week was, here's what we'd like you to do. We've actually been able to help direct parents on where to go. And so if you're talking to the Department of Health and Human Services, have you contacted the superintendent? Have you contacted the superintendent's office? And then from there, we have internal communication flow charts now that sort of tell us where we're going and what to do. We're actually populating those things with documents and information, so if one of us was out, another person could step in. And so it's really helped us become a lot more organized with dealing with this. There's pieces of this that'll carry, good strategies and good professional business practices, carry past COVID. But for now, really helping us better target the communication, where if any one of us was to step out or have to pick up a piece for somebody else, we could do that really easily. The communication with the Department of Health and Human Services, though, as I said, was probably the most concerning. I think we have that covered now moving forward. I did speak with the Commission of Education on that. We did sort of indicate that there were some definite difficulties and challenges the state was facing. I recommended that, as we're doing here, that the Department of Health and Human Services lean more heavily on school departments. We have the information for our kids, our parents, in all the communities in the state. Unfortunately, we were getting calls two or three days later for the department not having phone numbers for kids, not knowing who was on their list compared to who was on my list. And that left some really big gaps, where some just follow-through communication now that we'll do, that we thought they were going to do, will help fill some of those gaps. So from the case itself, we really learned a lot. We debriefed, there were some things that we did well. There were some definite things based upon our communication and who's getting communicated with, we can approve upon. The timing of any one of these cases will really be critical to how we can communicate, who we communicate to, and when we communicate. So it was 7:30 when I found out emails were going to parents at 9:45. And there was over an hour and a half lapsed between initially finding out and talking to the Department of Health and Human Services and the board, and then getting ahold of that parent. So again, I think we have some plans going forward that will help us. I hope the community can be supportive, knowing that we went through, doing the best we can. Not everyone's going to find out everything at the same time. There's sort of a, when you need to know, you're going to find out. We try not to send out too much communication as to confuse elementary school parents. And I think some people were a little critical of that, and I can understand that. But again, at 9:30, we're trying to communicate with the people who at the utmost need to get communicated with for potentially waking up at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning and putting your child on a bus. With that said, we had some teachers that showed up to school, and I believe we had some students that showed up to school. So again, we'll continue to work on our communication process. I really would like the administration, Amanda, if you would allow her, to talk more about sort of the impact of what you're seeing not only on our classrooms, because our teachers are doing a great job, our kids are doing a great job. But our teachers hold themselves to high expectations. This district is what it is because of our teachers who hold themselves to that high expectations. And we're now telling our teachers, oh yes, you have to leave the building every day at 4 o'clock. And I'm sorry, but you don't have a duty-free lunch anymore. And sometimes we may take somebody a prep period, and you can't really leave the kids, you know, we're going to give you an extra recess duty or extra lunch duty. There's a lot more that we put on our teachers that is going to have an impact. Sean said that it's not going to have, we'll still be able to get our curriculum. We'll be able to do our curriculum because our teachers are going to make sure that we can do our curriculum. Again, that's standard they hold themselves to. But it does come with a price. It comes with a price where I can say very openly and honestly that a week ago, people were at a real critical point feeling that pressure. We came back here Monday, I think people were refreshed and saying, okay, we survived that, we can do the next week. What's the next thing that's going to happen? And I think it's okay, but there is an understanding we have to have, I have to have as superintendent, my administration has to have, as leaders in this district, that people are fragile. Not only are they dealing with potential things here, wanting to educate kids, COVID cases, there's a lot of personal stuff that everybody has as well that goes along with being in a COVID situation, whether it's daycare, whether it's your employment, your spouse's employment, your relatives, folks that live in your family. And it has a major impact. So I'm going to, one last piece. Amanda did a nice survey to folks, and just sort of checking in with folks. We looked at remote learning, like, should we be shutting down? Should we look for an opportunity to shut down, give ourselves sort of that time to get rid of sickness, take advantage of the holidays, we're worried about travel, people traveling, coming back, quarantining for 14 days. We have folks that haven't seen their parents in six, nine months, and I know plenty of people on this board have heard the same thing. Holidays coming with the restrictions. One of the things people, teachers really spoke loudly on is, we want schools, stay in schools as long as possible. So I think it speaks again to their professionalism, their dedication. We also, I also think now really looking over, knowing now what we know about COVID, and looking over what the future brings and not being sure, staying in school as long as we can makes the most sense. Because we could say we're going remote between Thanksgiving and Christmas for three weeks. We could pull that off pretty easily. It would be real simple for us to do. We would put a lot of families at a disadvantage in this community, and we have to be very cognizant of that. We heard loud and clear through a paper survey regarding internet access, elementary school families saying, you can't go remote, we can't, we both work, we wouldn't be able to do it, we'd have to quit a job. And so it's really helped me look at that perspective, because as much as it's about, it's about this community, it's about families, it's about our students, it's about our teachers, and just putting that all into sort of the mixer and trying to make sure we're making the right decisions. So now I'll shut up and let Sean, Negan, Walter, Tara, and Amanda, if you'll allow them.
How do you hold that?
Yeah, I can speak to it, because, and I should be able to do a quick one, because I know a doc said already, you know, the teachers are busy, they didn't settle well. A typical teacher teaches five classes, and then has a prep, and then has a duty, which sometimes is a study hall, where they can potentially get some work done. Almost all of our teachers now are teaching six classes. We've done that in order to socially distance appropriately, which I think Mr. Holden would encourage. That was very helpful when we had our outbreak, it was, we didn't have a lot of exposure because of that. So teachers are working a lot, they don't have a duty-free lunch. You know, we do have kids who are being appropriately cautious and staying out, and teachers are working with them. And so it is a lot of work. With that said, you know, largely, large, large percentage of our teachers are like, we're here. You know, when they're busy, they're like, you know what's great? We're here, we want to be here. And frankly, what this means is that we're, yes, it's going to be a busy year, we're going to be teaching six classes, we're going to have some kids who are out more than they typically would because we're waiting for a COVID test. If you have sniffles, you have to wait for a COVID test, so you're out two or three days. But I know, I'll speak for the middle high school, I don't want to speak for the elementary school, but I know the middle high school teachers because I talk to them, they're busy, but they're excited to be here, they're glad to be here, they want to be here. And they're happy to have their kids here.
I would compare with everything that Sean says, and I'll just offer a couple of other points. I think, you know, one concern for me is the collegiality piece for teachers, there's really no time. I mean, you know, from 7:30 to 8:00, teachers used to see each other at the cafeteria. You know, you'd be mingling, and there'd be some connections fleeting, but you would see each other. Teachers ate lunch together, teachers, there's a few windows of connection, but those set, you know, 16 minutes for lunch, that was a great just way to connect with the other adults and work with. And that's not here anymore, because everyone's in rooms with kids. So that's certainly on my mind. We have a wonderful crop of new teachers, we have four, we're the rookie squad, and we meet every other week to talk about stuff. But there's a lot of teachers who really don't know the new teachers. So, you know, some of our focus is trying to, you know, go, maybe leave someone during their lunch period, so just go late lunch, leave some lunch. And that sort of thing, so just looking out for that is just maybe an unexpected aspect of this, is trying to keep that good culture here, people being connected with each other. And it sounds like Walter's really into it. I also, you know, Russ mentioned, if we were to not be here, the statistics are really staggering on the impact on, you know, two, you know, two-parent working families. The number of women having to leave the workforce, the statistics on that are staggering. So I'm so proud that we're staying open while we can, and that we're here so that parents in working families can keep working. So to add another aspect to this special.
At the elementary school, it's the same kind of attitude that everyone's happy to be there. The struggle that we're having is, you know, our students arrive at 7:30, we have teachers that are in classrooms at 7:30. Before this school year began, it became this scheduling nightmare of duties, because at the elementary, they have a before-school duty now, they have a morning recess duty, they have a lunch duty, they have an afternoon recess duty, and then they have dismissal duty at the end, because we have to watch kids at then. Because we can't put kids into large groups and just send, you know, 30 kids up to the playground. And so that became a scheduling nightmare of how to do that, and still give them their prep time, still give them a 25-minute lunch, and still try to respect the fact that there are those mornings when you need to come in and run papers off. And if you're literally walking in the building at 7:30, you have no time to prep for your day. So we're having to rearrange people, and we got it. We came up with a plan, and we started the school year with a plan. And then throughout the year, what has happened in the last six weeks, we've had a number of teachers who, and it has nothing to do with COVID, they've had medical issues of, they've had root canals, they've had, you know, knee surgery or knee issues that look possibly like knee surgery. We had a teacher out for two weeks on a medical leave. We had a death of a teacher, had a death in our family. So when you have some of the out, that they need to take the day, it becomes this chess game of how do we reshuffle everyone? And so every night, it becomes a new email that sends up, gets sent up, coverage for tomorrow. And it's everyone being shuffled to make sure that everyone is being covered, the children are being supervised, and that no one is having their lunch taken away, or their prep taken away, or whatever. And so the teachers, one of the things that the teachers have been fantastic about is when that has happened, they're like, oh, no problem. I don't mind being with my kids, or no problem, I don't mind giving up my prep, or no problem. And I'm like, no, 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 right now I can do it. There's going to be a day, and a couple of weeks ago, we had a day where we had a number of staff people up, and we came very close to not being able to do that. And I had to say to the teachers, there is going to be a day when I have to say to you, you don't have a choice. You have to give up lunch today because we have run out of bodies, and we cannot cover people. So, and they've understood that, and they've been wonderful with that. But that is part of the fear that we have, is what happens if we have a number of staff people out on Monday because we just don't have the coverage to cover it in this classroom? So that's what we live with, but our staff has stepped up to the plate, and they've been very wonderful of allowing me to play my chess game every night, of rearranging everyone, so that's what's happening at elementary.
Staff in general, I would agree, they're thrilled to be back, they love seeing kids, and being able to engage on a very personal level with kids. I would tell you unequivocally, there are huge academic meetings that students are coming back with that staff is worried about. They're worried about how we're going to best provide for these students academically and socially, socially emotionally. We've done, since the start of the school year, we've already done 60 additional IEDs. But in addition to all of our normal work that we have in the year, we've already had to have 60 additional IEDs. We're already beyond the number of the vows scheduled in the school year, and we've already exceeded that from last year. So people are working really hard, they're really engaged, they want to be here, but it's hard. There's no question, it can be hard at times. And some people are anxious about the dynamics and COVID. All in all, like I said, the staff's working really hard, and I think they're pleased to be here and want to be here as long as they can.
Tara, is the additional IED needs, is that just because of what we got from last break?
No, that's actually a result of the governor's executive order that mandated that we have an additional meeting on every student to decide whether or not they require compensatory ed for the March to June time period.
Amanda, can you please, and Keller, please go back to your desk, with staff here and also.
So if I'm not coherent, it's going to be lame bet by now. But I just, I attended these Western Region president meetings for all of the unions across, and we are in a very, very fortunate place in some of me, because I'm listening to these people talking about what they're going through with their districts, and I just sit there quietly. Our administration and leadership team have gone above and beyond a lot of other schools, but I know personally in my classroom, I'm a short staff, Tara was in my classroom multiple days, being a par educator for me because I needed somebody. Walter has more lunch and recess duties for anybody. Multiple teachers coming on me and then Sean just saying, hey, how are you, what do you need? I think goals were put out to help teachers with their evaluation, like, all of these little things mean so much right now, and it's helping teachers not get to that tipping point, right? Like, if we're up here, it helps them not get over it. Like, the sustainability is a huge piece, but I don't think it's one thing that's causing people to feel overwhelmed. Like, for one teacher, it might be, they don't have that duty-free lunch, and that's their tipping point. For another teacher, it might be that they have to leave at 4:30 every day. For another teacher, it might be that there's kids in their room at 7:30, there's just, the dynamics are changing, and it's not, all of us are creatures of habit usually with teachers, and all of our habits are being thrown out the window, all of our routines are. And as most of you know, that have to wear a mask, just wearing a mask all day is tiring. And then making sure your kids are socially distanced, because you don't want to get the call that it was your classroom, or... So all of these things are huge, but from all the conversations I've had with teachers unanimously, people want to be in school. If you ask us what's best for our kids, what's best for their learning, it's to be in school. For teaching, for us to cover our curriculum, to troubleshoot the kids, to see what they need, it's to be in school. For parent support, it's for the kids to be in school. So I think regardless of all the issues that are coming up and all of the tears that are shed, people know that this is the best situation, and I think a lot of the anxiety is coming from that unknown, because there are teachers and families that haven't been able to see parents or grandparents for six months. So I don't know if it's necessarily looking at, like, oh, do we go remote Thanksgiving and Christmas? Or is it that we take a little bit longer at Christmas? oh, do we go remote Thanksgiving and Christmas? Or is it that we take a little bit longer at Christmas so people can have that time to travel if they need to? Or like however it may work, I just think to help with that stress load, we need to not look at going remote if we don't have to, but how can we alleviate maybe some of that stress? And then just if we are to go to remote, having that schedule in place, those systems in place, like for me as a preschool teacher, if I, if we go remote and I could teach from my classroom, that would be way easier. It's all your supplies are there. So I, it's like everybody else, the unknown of today, tomorrow. Yesterday, I was like, no problem. I can do this all year. Today, at eleven thirty, I was like, did I just teach twelve hours for preschool? Because it's just different every single day. But I think those check-ins that administrators are doing and even just saying like, hey, I got your class for ten minutes. Go to the bathroom and like, just stay in there for ten minutes. Those little things matter. And go, I appreciate it. But overall, people want to stay in school. It's just the resources keep them coming.
I think it's really helpful insight on my own terms and knowing that you were, I didn't mean to be flexible, but lunch is not everything else. With no chance to breathe despite everyone's chest and care and anything else. Teachers just how sustainable this is. So my general questions tonight, so I think you guys have addressed it in a broad spectrum way. I don't know if the board have questions or comments. I think it's helpful here. I think it's helpful for the community here. Thoughts or, no, absolutely. I just hear your.
Well, it's very insightful and helpful to hear because I think as parents too, we're all dealing with it, you know, and work too. Like, so it's just, everything is upside down in Sunapeas right now. But it's really, really a blessing to have the team we have here in Sunapeas. Nine out of ten school districts in the whole country are probably trying to place this with us, right? So thank you for all that you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
I would say, yeah, nothing's without its challenges. And I think this year has got to push a lot of people to go to the limits of what they're willing to deal with. But I have to sing a lot of praise to the administration, to the planning, what's gone into all of this. And then having, you know, a daughter who's just come out of quarantine today. I was like so thoroughly impressed with how quickly she was able to pivot immediately to a remote learning situation, keep up with all their classes, the level of engagement from all of the teachers to reach out and make sure that everything she needed, she had to do what she had to do. So I mean, that's hugely impressive. And I always compare notes with my friends in other states and up in Canada. And I can hand on heart say that I think we are leaps abounds in how to, what's going on elsewhere. So I think there's a lot of clues to everybody whose boots on the ground getting a job done and doing it as well.
Yeah, keep us informed and then filter feedback. What your experiences has been for us is important. And all it's been critical to the community has been insightful as well. So thanks for everything you do. If you're okay with moving forward, I think once the by language, I want to move on to the last informational item. The October, the yearly October one enrollment data of the COVID twist.
COVID twist. So I'll say it brief as I possibly can. Pretty straightforward stuff. You have the document in your packet. I just want to put it all together for you though. See the totals in the ten oh one, twenty twenty totals? Those totals include the remote kids that are on the right-hand side, just so you know. So that four oh one includes our eighteen remote kids because our eighteen remote kids are, they're our children in our school district. What that total does not include, the four oh one, would be the twelve kids that reconsidered, eight out of preschool and four out of kindergarten, as well as the eleven homeschoolers. So we had eleven new homeschoolers this year. The eleven new homeschoolers, it honestly, they'll be back, they'll be back to us as soon as COVID's gone. They're coming right back to us. And I'm going to assume maybe out of those twelve preschool kindergarten kids, a lot of that had to do with, it's not a mandated preschool, it's not a mandated kindergarten. If I didn't have to send my child to daycare, it would still something else. I didn't. If I put all that together, my total would have been four twenty-four compared to last year at four thirty-two. So the four oh one, again, that talks about kids in our, kids in our building, kids on remote. I had my eleven preschoolers. I have my twelve kids that pulled out potentially because of COVID. I'm at around four twenty-four.
I forgot, last year we jumped thirty or thirty-three to a whole thing. Because we were around four a couple of years ago.
Yeah, we were probably around four oh one. We jumped up to about four thirty-one. Yeah, four thirty-two, I think that's exactly.
Questions or comments from the board? This is snapshot in time. It's nice to see the column with remote learning have so few kids, but also here, a board member that that was a positive experience for your daughter. So that's where we are right now. I don't have any.
If this is snapshot, they were required to take a report to receive.
Yep. Seeing inflated by language, clearly no interest in talking about that anymore. We'll move to the AP manifest. If I could get one motion for all AP manifests written.
I'll make a motion to approve AP manifests twenty twenty-one dash oh four for a hundred ninety-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and twelve cents. Two thousand and two dash zero five for one hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars and thirty cents. And AP manifest two zero two one dash zero six for a hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents.
Second as read and written. Any, great. We'll give that a, any questions or comments? We already spent time in meetings. All in favor of approving the AP manifest as written by Scott?
Aye.
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 Do you want to go around? You're all warmed up.
As I wants to. I'll go ahead and payroll manifests for approval, two thousand twenty-one dash oh five for two hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred and three dollars and three cents. Two thousand and twenty-one dash zero five point one, three thousand six dollars and thirty-seven cents. Two thousand twenty-one dash zero five point two, one thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-three cents. Two thousand twenty-one dash zero six for four hundred nineteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Two thousand twenty-one dash zero six point one, four thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. And finally, two thousand twenty-one dash zero seven, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second is as written by Carrie. Any discussion or commentary? Now we're on stretch, folks. All in favor of approving payroll manifest as written and stated, do you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We are on to the final chapter. Let this venture together. The public forum in accordance with policy E E D H. If moved to speak. May you so I highly suspicious. We have an early taker.
How long do I get to speak twice? Once as chairman and once as a citizen?
We'll start with hearing from you as a citizen.
As a citizen. Carrie, I apologize for getting my voice up. It's very frustrating going through all this, for all the work we put in. A question or a concern I just had that when I heard your daughter just came out of quarantine? Someone else I know, not near you, anywhere near you, but the Hampshire's daughter quarantined for two weeks and they said they have to quarantine twenty-eight days.
Twenty-four.
Right after the daughter, it was a son that comes out of quarantine, the parents still have to quarantine. So that's very weird. So what are you doing here if your daughter just quarantined? I'm just throwing that out there, but that's, when I heard that, I'm like, wait a minute, we got different rules there. So Russ, you agree. It's twenty-four days. Because I joked and said, so you got twenty-eight day vacation.
The D H S S has very interesting rules, but we have followed our rules through it. But I'll be happy to review it.
I just want to, but don't worry, one assistive worker, so I'm not.
Everyone in the room is okay.
So I just want to clarify a couple of things with this Arias Building Company. They know, and Russ, I got it from you. That was the company that did Wyndham Portable Classrooms. So all this information I got through you and then reached out to Brian and gave him numbers. So what are the questions to these schools in Massachusetts? What are the questions to Wyndham temporary or stuff like that? So, and again, we heard E I's proposal a year ago was eleven million to renovate the school if the bond failed. So we kind of knew that going in and out there at ten two. So again, I asked them, give me a ballpark. I just want to know, what are we looking at? So to put a twenty-four thousand square foot building up, wood frame larger, so if they're all prefond, it's five point eight million dollars. If you wanted to do a steel concrete, it's eight point one million dollars. If you wanted to do two of those, we'd give you forty-eight thousand square feet for eleven million dollars. Benwell is looking to build fifty-two thousand square foot school here for eighteen million dollars. And just so you know, I supported the eighteen million dollar school and said, but separate it. Don't put those fields on it. And they didn't want to hear it and it failed. So here's my big concern, and you guys can do whatever you want to do with this. And the only reason I'm looking for them to come in, and they're not coming into the school. They're kind of looking at the property here to say, where could we put an addition on? Would we have to go to the sports field? Or could we do a two level up and down? You know, it's a long building. You guys have already told us that you can fit K through A here, no problem. It's the nine through twelve. You don't have enough of them to do it. So that's why I said, well, nine through twelve's a win. A hundred and forty-six person average is your eleven-year average. Their classrooms are twenty-five to thirty students. Russ, you said you needed twelve classrooms at nine hundred square feet. When you take that, divide by the hundred and forty-six students in the four grades, it's eleven, eleven point something kids in the classroom. I don't know what you have right now in the classrooms, but just with those classrooms, you have plenty of space. I know you're concerned about bathrooms and stuff like that. This company builds schools. So included in that, you're going to have bathrooms and all that. I just want them to come look and say, yeah, we could do this. Nah, we can't do that. And as a committee, that's what we're looking for, to look at what is the best interest for all included in this. Because I'm going to tell you what I've been hearing. There's more taxpayers that have no children in the school system. There's like twenty-three hundred in this town. If we have four hundred kids in this school here and they both have a parent, so that's eight hundred students' parents that move out. But there's another fourteen, thirteen hundred that don't have kids and they're going to vote. And when you're trying to pass a bond referendum, you need that sixty percent or whatever. So those are the people you're looking to try and to sell this project to. So when I looked at this, I said, okay, again, twenty-four thousand square foot addition was five point eight million. You can go double, double up, two on top. So you wouldn't have as much like they were going out. And it would cost you for an elevator to put in, but they'll have shafts in it. You could do basically, if you wanted to go with the fifty, or forty-eight thousand square foot, it would be eleven million dollars. These guys are talking about a ninety-five year old building spending ten million dollars point something. This is brand new, twenty-five year warranty on the buildings and everything. Doesn't have to worry about the kids crossing across parking lots and everything else. Again, they need to come out and see where could we put it here, if it can even be done. And that was the only reason that we asked you to say, can you have someone come out? And I shot the email to Russ. I said, they don't have to come during school time. They will all be masked up. C I Ps invited, Russ invited, myself and any of our board members that want to come. Just to give us.
Here's your forward discussion. And you're leaving with what you were hoping for and that you'd be able to have beyond the same.
But I want to clarify, so Arias Building knows, the Sunapeas School Board is not, we are an independent group and they know that. We're not paying them anything. They're looking to get a job done. And so that's all we ask for that.
You're well over the time for sort of crowds of people. So I just want to be respectful of.
Why didn't see anybody else? So how much time do I have, Jesse?
Well, you've taken two, three-minute sections so far. So just trying to be respectful of how this works, whether you like it or not. That's how.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. But again, it's frustrating. We've been doing this since July. You know, you would think you'd give a little bit of leeway. This is always sudden people in the building here. And I'm not conflicting, you know, I'm not challenging. This is not, oh, oh, oh.
Well, it gave you a lot of leeway. And there's been a lot of leeway taken on the emails, but this is public comment within a public meeting that has a policy.
What do you mean the emails?
There have been lots of exchanges where there's.
To Russ, like you guys asked us.
And initially, I was reading the guidelines, including.
Which, which we've done everything in the guidelines said, okay?
Whether or not you and I are having a very good night tonight, there is a policy, there's a guideline in media format that we need to adhere to.
So I don't want to waste my couple more minutes I got arguing with the guidelines or not. So all I'm just saying is this, and I'll end on this note, okay? You had certain people show up at this meeting tonight. Half the problem I hear with this town is that you come to a school board meeting, same type of things happen here. You don't answer questions. Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. All I'm saying to you is this, guys, the voters are going to vote one way or the other. You want us to be on your side. As we're saying, we want to try and keep K through twelve here. When I see stuff like this, I feel that it's like, you guys have got your mind made up with E I already. So why are we wasting our time? I'm going to finish this project as a chairman and we will come with a thing in probably December at this point with a recommendation. You have every right to say, thank you for your time. Here's our recommendation. And that will go out to the taxpayers. And then when people hear different things, maybe somebody else puts a bond up, so maybe a couple of months. I don't know. I'm trying to keep this so K through twelve stays in Sunapeas, not turn into a battle between you and I or your friends yet. I don't have kids in the school system. I don't have grandkids here or anything. So I put a lot of time into this trying to bring the community together. I'm not one of the ones that said, oh, just make it a K through eight and get rid of the kids. I'm trying to say, how can we do this? So that's what we're looking at and we see.
Thanks for the time that you've put into this and begging for a leave committee. Kevin?
Thank you. Yeah, I did a little bit of a, um, I wrote down four or five impressions I had and I agree. And one more impression I have, I really appreciate the school board members, particularly on the public, discussing a very difficult set of issues. And we brought you through E I and just the other issues standing before us in communities. I think the fact that you're sharing your opinions with individuals and coming to your own conclusion or consensus at least on some of this would be a very good thing to hear. It's not something that's done in a closed meeting. I know you've all put a lot of thought into that. And I do appreciate the fact that you're willing to offer your opinions and where we should go next on these big projects. So as a voter, citizen, taxpayer, I want to thank you for that. I also want to appreciate the guidance that you offered as a result of some of the guidance offered by E I. It's not there anymore. Okay. I appreciate their guidance, but I appreciate the guidance that you arrived at for us to be more informed about what your thinking is. And I guess that's about why, like I said, you're not there all the way yet. So I'll stay tuned. I'm also a member of the community gate. And it's tough to get a cohesive group together in a couple of months. Nine people suddenly never met each other before. Though there is some diversity of opinions. But the one thing that I think I can speak for the committee on is that we have unanimously agreed on is that, and we've stated in the letter, is that we do want to keep K through twelve education here in Sunapeas. We do want to keep that here. And I think the question of, speaking for me, the question of how we get there, how we achieve that goal, is really up to the school board, elected voters, elected representatives of the voters. So I want you to know that there's unanimity around that as well, as stated by the letter from the committee. And finally, I really enjoyed listening to the comments of the superintendent staff. And then thanks for staying up till the end. I appreciate that. I appreciate the comments they offered around the trials and tribulations that you've been dealing with in these early month or two of school opening. And what came through for me in listening to you was the sense of real concern, real challenge. And to me, most importantly, was real collegiality. And that's. And as someone who's lived in this community a while and is a voter and supportive of most options, um, I do appreciate that. I appreciate you hearing, me hearing and I appreciate you speaking publicly. And, uh, it's one of the reasons that I believe, uh, I've been stated earlier about why we do have such a special school system here in Sunnabie. And I know we'll keep it for the leadership we have. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bo, for speaking up. Uh, personal voice, please introduce yourself.
Hi, uh, I'm Thomas Galton from, uh, Winnie Hill Road. Uh, I also want to thank, I'm just waiting to get rid of this before I can actually speak. Um, I want to also thank the school board, the school members. My, I think I'm the only person here who actually has a daughter in the school system of all the people that were, that were here as citizens, as only citizens, as a teacher or representative of the union. And last year was just an extraordinary challenge for my daughter being in solitary confinement pretty much from her friends, from the community. And even today, I think with the lack of people here, we're also still seeing that kind of solitary confinement that the community is sort of in with COVID. Uh, I'd also like to thank you and also say, um, one of the things we have been doing is I've been able to, luckily I've been able to go to a couple of soccer games. And I really appreciate the, uh, the way that we have been following the rules here, social distancing, keeping masks on during our game, the soccer games here. But one thing that I'd like to point out is that our kids are also going to other schools. Uh, and of the two, of the three games that I've seen, one was here, one was at Kearsarge, one was at Claremont. The Claremont one, I want to just bring up that nobody was wearing masks on the Claremont, uh, of the Claremont adults there. You walk into the field, there's a big sign right there that says past this point, you need to have masks on. I had a mask on, walked through. There was almost nobody on that side that had masks. They were all clumped together. Um, it, it was not what you want to see for a COVID, uh, type situation. So, uh, I would hope that, uh, as teachers and also as school representatives, you could think about that also when we send kids to other schools. Uh, I can, I was happy to see with Kearsarge, they were very much spaced out, they had, uh, masks, they were enforcing it and that sort of thing. So thank you very much again for your time and thank you for, uh, having our kids in school. It really does mean a lot to them to be back in these buildings.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, man. Jan, you're the only person I've spoken to, Jim, and I do like operating. All right. I think that, uh, I'm making a motion, I'm making a motion to propose to be in P fifty-three on Wednesday, September. That was a three-way. All in favor? Aye. Good night. Thank you, everyone, for a couple hours of your time. And Carrie, the community is very, very proud of you.